Good evening, everyone. Mayor Steele is absent tonight, so I will be presiding as deputy mayor. I would like to call this meeting to order. Before we move into adoption of the agenda, we'd like to present a video message from Mayor Steele regarding tonight's budget.
I'm sorry I'm not able to be with you in person tonight, as I'm attending an important meeting out of town. I support the rate budget, however, I have concerns. While staff are recommending an increase this year, it represents necessary progress in addressing issues that lead to the high water bills residents of Port Colborne face. There are two ways to combat these rising costs, and the rate budget is addressing both. The first way is to tackle our infrastructure deficiencies. The upcoming staff presentation will showcase a number of projects that are either underway or coming soon that will help improve the water, wastewater, and stormwater infrastructure within the city, including repairing aged and inefficient storm sewers, as well as installing storm sewers in one-third of the city that was built without them. My greatest concern with water, wastewater billing, is that it's not fairly billed by the region among Niagara towns and cities. As a reminder, almost seventy percent of our wastewater budget in Port Colborne is directly related to the bill we receive from the Niagara region. This year, Niagara region's rate budget is looking at an increase of twelve point two seven percent. This greatly affects the bill we sent to you. With that said, I'm pleased to note that the region and area municipalities will be conducting a water wastewater rate review. The last time this was done was in 2015, almost ten years ago. We believe that what we pay to the region is more than what we would pay if we operated the water and sewer plants ourselves. We don't think this is fair. We do look forward to the results of this review. In the meantime, I'd like to again express my support for the rate budget presented by staff this evening. I look forward to the great work council and our Public Works and other staff teams continue to accomplish together. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to the adoption of the agenda, moved by Council Baguio, seconded by Council Beauregard, that the Committee of the Whole Budget Agenda dated November twentieth, 2024, be confirmed as circulated. Questions? All in favor? Carried. Disclosures of interest? Any disclosures of interest this evening? Seeing none? Staff reports, 2025 rate budget, 2024 dash two one five. We're going to start by moving their part to get it on the floor, moved by Councilor Agulina, seconded by Councilor Danche. Mr. Bowles, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Deputy Minister and Deputy Mayor. That was pretty good. Yes, that's perfect. And for those that are watching online tonight, and thanks for staff for coming out tonight as we go through the rate budget. I will, as normal, go through and then have a couple spots where we can stop and ask questions as we go forward, and I hope I have this on right. Click, click, and it didn't go forward, so it might have been something wrong with our clicker. Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll work as a team and we'll go back and forth. So, on one of these first slides here, we do, just like we do with our other budgets, we set out the expectation with respect to our budget process. So, when we do a budget, we're taking all the information that we as staff have at that time. We've talked to councillors, we've talked to many, we've had a number of citizens call in and give us some comments. We take all of that information and we bring forward the budget to you. It will be, I'm sure, as we go through the year, there will be some changes, and we bring those changes back to council for approval. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the municipal act identifies that the budget is required to balance. So, the next slide just identifies what our agenda is tonight. So, we will talk about the budget summary, some of the city fundamentals, details, and we're going to talk about looking forward, because we've done some forward forecasts with respect to the budget. Just before we get going, on the next slide, we'll identify our, oh, there was some graphics on that slide, so that's great. On the next slide, we're just going to identify the recommendation. So, the recommendation that will be before council with respect to the rate budget is that it be received and that it be approved. We've also included the commentary with respect to debt substitution, and you're going to see one of the projects as we go through this capital budget. We budgeted for it, and because of where we've stacked the timing of the budget, we haven't had to make the full budget payment this year, and we'd recommend using, instead of paying for that budget payment, using it to pay down the debt, so we don't have to issue as much debt, and we can do other projects going forward. So, I'll explain that one once we get there. So, next slide, if it's working, is there no, oh, that was the slide I was just talking about. So, then the next slide, mission, vision, and values. So, when we go forward and we build the budget, we're building it in accordance with our vision, mission, and values. And you'll see on this presentation, which is new from previous ones, on the top right-hand corner, if I have used a presentation from the last budget presentation, I've identified it in the top right. That way, I can go a little quicker on it. We've already seen it, we've already discussed it. But this way, if somebody reads this budget independent of any other one, they still have some of the information. So, on our next slide, it identifies our strategic plan, and our key to achieving the strategic plan is to take care of our people, try to make things as simple and operational, as effective as possible, do projects of value, and we will achieve ultimately what our customer is required. On our next slide, we'll identify our budget drivers, and I think this is going to be subject to a lot of questions. I can stop here after I say these and ask, answer some questions, but we'll also get into details as we go through. So, the main budget drivers here is, as the mayor already noted, a twelve point two seven percent increase from the Niagara region. So, when you think about where our cost structure is, almost sixty-five, almost seventy percent of our costs from wastewater come from the Niagara region. So, if we're getting a twelve percent increase, we have to recover that. They're the distributor to us, and then we distribute it out to the residents. So, we do find ourselves in a position where if they're at twelve point two seven, it's very hard for us not to follow that. The other, I think, item that I just want to point out is the Niagara region does allocate it based on variable of fixed costs. So, as our water volumes increase, that also impacts, and we have some slides later on the presentation, I thank Public Works for putting them together, that compares our water volumes to lake levels, to precipitations, et cetera. And then the last item is just, it's a budget driver, but it's more maybe of a future budget driver is, and the mayor did make reference to this, as staff, the mayor, and other councillors, we've been working for a number of years, talking to the Niagara region, asking them to do a rate methodology. And that's really to do a review, to see how do they take their costs when they clean the water, when they clean the wastewater, and how do they distribute those costs down to municipalities like us. And then the last thing that's really driving it, and we'll have a conversation too tonight, about infrastructure. We've already approved a number of infrastructure projects, and we'll see the infrastructure projects, not only that we've approved, but also some of the effect and what percentage of that is of the budget. So, I know as we go through the numbers, these will come up, but if council wants to ask a question on any of these right now, I'm happy to take them before we get into detail. No, keep going. On our next slide, before, I think it's very important, before we get into the budget, we kind of look at, well, what kind of water, wastewater, storm sewer system do we have? This information has been to council at different times. It's in our asset management plan. People can go online and type in asset management plan, and they will see this. You will see the storm, wastewater, and water network in total. This is a total replacement cost, to be able to replace it over time. It'd be six hundred and eighty million dollars. That's the total cost of the total system. And you can make reference to the fact that the storm network would actually be a little bit cheaper, but part of that is because part of the city doesn't have a storm sewer network. So, it's not that it's necessarily cheaper to do, it's that we don't have as many kilometers of pipe to actually have to replace. And we've also done quite considerable work in the past couple of years with respect to the condition of our water, wastewater, and storm systems. And you can see the water network actually has the largest group in Varyport. Now, council's established some goals at different times, by 2030 or 2040, to bring and deal with the Varyport. I will highlight, in order to do that, our spending requirement on capital needs to be in the area of eighteen point seven million annually. And right now, our total capital budget allocates three point nine million to capital. So, while we've made great strides on the levy to create, to shrink the gap, on the water, wastewater, and storm, there is still significant work in order to replace and run a system of this magnitude. And then I just highlight, again, on the right-hand side, that specifically on wastewater, almost seventy percent of the costs are coming from the Niagara region, and the city definitely needs to, and will need to over time, expand its storm sewer system to be able to handle this. And just maybe one last, one last comment with respect to this slide, just for anybody watching in council. I know we've talked about this before, but to clean, or to replace one kilometer of pipe that we might have for water, wastewater, it would cost almost two point nine million dollars, if we were to completely pull it out, put a new one in. And a lot of that has to do with either the rock within the city, or within, with respect to the potential contaminants in certain locations that we may have in soils, with respect to certain legislations that we have. So, I think that really puts into perspective, when it costs two point nine million to do one kilometer, and we have a hundred kilometers of water pipe, and our total water, wastewater, and storm budget only puts three point nine million into, into the total system, which basically means we'd be just maybe a little less than a hundred years just to do the water before we even got to wastewater or storm, based on what we're investing now. So, that is something to consider as we go, as we go forward, and we will need to continue increasing, and I know people don't like to hear this, but we will have to continue to increasing our infrastructure budget to be able to handle and deal with some of the issues that we have within the system. So, I'll stop there.
Mr. Bowles, we have a question. Council Bruno, then Council Baguio.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you to the acting C O. Brian, when you really look at these numbers, we're already paying the highest in the region for these services. The region's got this gigantic infrastructure deficit, and I think for them, maybe some of it was those years they weren't putting in enough. But, you know, when you relegate, I just want to go over a couple numbers. When you talk about four million being spent against sort of eight million, eighteen million, I mean, you're in the magnitude of having to spend almost five times as much on capital. And I just really don't think it's realistic to expect that you can get that from a fixed group of water and wastewater residents. Like, it's, that I don't think is surmountable. If I look around the region, it seems there's a neighboring community, right? Like, they have the same problem, but they're, you know, been building seven hundred houses the last few years. And that goes a long way to having someone pay whose street isn't going to be needing a repair for seventy years, or piling money into the old. So, I mean, without, like, some massive growth, I mean, maybe, maybe the way to tackle this problem isn't necessarily the way we've always done it. I mean, you know, we talked about vacant land tax, you can't do that. You know, I'm wondering, you know, seven thousand housing units, but people are coming back for the second time around soon to, to add more units in what really is amounting to be a paper draft plan approval. And I'm afraid that we get too excited about draft plan approvals as opposed to actual construction. And I'm wondering if we need to attack this outside the box, like, you know, draft plans won't be reapproved without a start in construction. If you're a developer coming in for your second development, you haven't started your first, you know, we need to be more strategic, restringent. I'm assuming we've attacked grants every way we can. I don't know if there's more to do with, that we can use with debt financing at low rates, but I think we're going to have, and I think on the regional side, you know, I worry about the plan the region says they're now going to do. I mean, we've done enough studies in Port Colborne to know how much more we're paying to run these plants, because at the end of the day, yes, the leaks are a problem, yes, we're partly to blame for that problem, for sure. But, at the end of the day, when it's just more chemicals to treat, and they're charging you at this higher rate, we know this scenario. You and Steve and others have enlightened us over the years. I think, you know, a study by the region is, is going to take the better part of a year, and then some wrangling, they're already talking about ten percent next year. I think you've got to kind of go rogue on this, and just take our study, and if the, and get it backed in a peer review, and I think you're going to have to go to the region and the province, and their study won't put us, I don't think it will be ready or prove fruitful for the 2026 water and wastewater budget unless we go after it with the vengeance, because, you know, we've got our own house to clean up, and we're on the road to doing it. But, you know, the region's got all this growth across the region to supplement theirs. Some communities are down, some communities are up. But, I think the only way to move that fifty, seventy percent side of our cost is to attack it with everything we've got. And I think, I think if that means going to the province, if that means a campaign to show people not just here, but outside of Port Colborne, that, that their twelve percent come ten percent guaranteed for the next four years, whatever that number is, like, I mean, it's, it's out of sight compared to taxpayers. And, you know, if you want to look at the region should be like, you know, what you have in federalism, right? Where if one community's hurting, the one that's, that's not here, it's everybody pays the same per liter. You know, there should be like an equalization here with that. Or, or, or give us the plants back if the numbers prove it. But, you know, I know we're here about tonight, but if you look at these kind of numbers, I mean, even if we, and I certainly don't want to slow down, but, but if you had a tenth of the housing approvals start next year, you really wouldn't see the water bill and the tax bill till the year after. So, so we've got to be looking two years ahead, and I think right now, come to grips with two twenty-six in a big way, because I think we can walk and chew gum at the same time. We've got to try and stay the course on this. But, but we've got to be doing something about two, three years down the road. And if your biggest part of your bill is the region, then, then I think I'd be willing to, you know, putting dollars against this is vital, and I don't want to waste it not going into the ground. But, it doesn't take much to recoup a bunch of money to plow back in the ground if we can stop the hemorrhaging at the region end, because this is like really a double whammy, and it's, it's not really sustainable if we don't attack it on both fronts. So, I don't know if you can comment on anything we're about to do beyond this year, and, and make it brief, because we're here about 2025, I realize that. But, perhaps you could send some light on the way forward past, past tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So, I wrote a couple thoughts down as you were speaking, and I'll maybe give these to council and anybody that might be watching. So, when we actually look forward, I just want to be very clear that, like, these are just factual numbers. They're not here as a scare tactic. They're not here to say that rates are going up forever. The reality is, as we go through this presentation, we're going to find that our water loss rate is somewhere around forty-two percent, right? So, you shrink the water loss rate as you fix infrastructure, those are dollars that can be reinvested instead of increasing a water rate. Same thing on the wastewater, because if, some people might not realize that all of the water, I and I, if you have a, maybe you have a system where the, your house, you're draining water around your house, and you might be draining into the wastewater system. If that goes into the wastewater system, and it goes to the region, we end up paying, because everything we pay at the Niagara region system is based on volume. And I think as the councillor was pointing out, it's, it's actually, it's fixed for them. Almost ninety-plus percent of all the costs of a wastewater system are fixed. So, they bill us on volume. So, the more we do on infrastructure, the more we can save. You don't have to pay, and you can reinvest, and you don't have to raise rates to reinvest. So, that's one. Growth is no doubt another one. You grow, and you can spread the costs over more people. The other one, and you're going to see this as we get to the next layer and the final leg of the asset management plan work, you will see projects that will have additional debt requirements. And some of this capital that's right now is three point nine, that we're spending on specific projects, will move into more debt finance projects. And we have a slide tonight to talk about debt financing and where we can be there. But, I think your point with respect to the region goes to what the mayor said, and one of the drivers that I, I pointed out to start this presentation is, the region's going to do a study, and if, and we've done work internally, and we've looked at different options, and I think the director of Public Works for getting really involved, rolling up his sleeves and doing this. But, if council were direct us, and I know I'm kind of going to where I think you were saying, to say, we would like maybe a Port Colborne version of some things that could be done different in the allocation, we can certainly have a third party provide something, so that would help inform the region's review going forward. So, that is something definitely, if council wants to give us that direction, we can do it, and we can work that within the budget, and I would work with the director of Public Works on making that, that happen. And that might be a great way to make sure that the Port Colborne position on this is well-understood and well-known. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but those are a couple of things that we can do outside of rate, rate increases to try to tackle this infrastructure gap going forward.
Thank you. Council Baguio, question?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. In your slide you have in 2025, one kilometer of linear infrastructure estimated cost two point nine million dollars. I guess my question to the director of Public Works is, what is the cost in 2025 of one line, how we're lining the piping now, one kilometer, the estimated cost to me? On the average?
Steve?
Through you, your question.
This isn't a Jeopardy question.
Yeah, if you're okay, I'll follow up with that. Joe's just going to look at the exact person that we have right now on file.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that, then. We have had somewhat of a dry summer, a dry fall, and I know I and I, we're getting off lucky, I think, this year, so far, because of the less rainfall. And I do agree totally with Council Bruno regarding the region. I read the local newspaper, while, that, well, nothing's local anymore, but the region is crying that they are so shorthanded in staff, managers, and bill rights in their, in their water and wastewater, and they're crying the blues. So, us as a municipality, with our mayor, and I don't know if our regional council is involved in anything at all to do with this, but when we go back to them stating that we can do it better price, or whatever, it's telling me they're relying on all these monies, and they're still shorthanded. Like, whether something's being mismanaged in the region severely, which might be the first, probably not. I have concerns with that, because it's, why would they give us a break when I figure they're being mismanaged already by water, wastewater, and they're not going to give up those monies they rely on to get their ten new managers and new bill rights and everything else that they're saying. If we can get our infrastructure back from them and run it ourselves, or something like that, I'm totally in favor of it. And, so does that comment, I guess I have another question, though. I guess to Steve, it was mentioned that we have a low stormwater network because, because of the amount we have. Do we actually need a bigger stormwater network for the existing housing and streets in Port Colborne?
Steve? Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. So, that's a great question. A little later in the slideshow, we'll, we'll go over a couple of maps that actually show where some that actually show where um uh some of the vital locations in Port Colburn could use storm sewers. The storm sewers located in specific areas, if we do install them in specific areas, they would give us the ability to not only drain the roads, drain private property, but also take some sump pumps that are being currently discharged to the sanitary sewer and put them into the storm sewer where they should be. And that'll also help. That's the inflow portion of the I and I that we're trying to combat.
I'll make sure I'll catch that slide.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Further, council? Nothing, Mr. Pauls, go ahead.
Thank you. So next slide. Uh, the next slide we just highlight and and this is just at a big picture. This is council's goals. Council's goals is to reduce the water and wastewater build. So if you were being billed a dollar for water or you're being billed a liter of of water, that we would eventually get to a spot where we would only be sending a liter of wastewater back. Right now, for every liter we bill somebody, we actually spend, we send two point three liters back to the waste treatment plant. And that's the real problem with our wastewater system is we're spending, we're sending over double the water back to the wastewater system. And the region's billing model bills us based on that volume, even though their costs don't go up in that same model, that same way. Their costs are primarily fixed. And then on the water loss, the city, and you're going to see some charts, the city has had some success up and down with respect to water loss. Recently, the water loss levels um have settled around forty-four. I think I said forty-two, but my slide here says forty-four percent. And that is another area that we are going to continue to work on. And one thing that we're really going to ask, and I know Public Works is putting together a program for this right now, is we are looking next year to go and do some audits of some of the meters with respect to some of the larger industrial and commercial properties. We've done a lot of work with respect to this. And we've found that one, it their accuracy will diminish over a period of time and I think that's well known within the industry. We haven't gone out with that check at all spots in a while. We do need to do that. The other is just to be where they're located. Certain meters need a certain run rate before and after the meter. And I know we had a third party install them many years ago. We need to go and take an audit to see if we have the appropriate appropriate run rate runway. We'll let the director of public works get into the technical. But give me a yeah, as a finance person. But that's basically just the space before and the space after the meter. We we have to take a look at that. Um, and we have, I I kind of adjusted our investments in this. This slide, these are projects we talked about a couple of weeks ago, reinvesting um with respect to storm water, wastewater laterals, water replacement, uh water main replacements. There's over nine million dollars in water race, water uh main replacements happening over the next little bit. Some of those have broken ground right now and Steve is going to get into detail on those. So on our next slide, these are the rate impacts. I think a lot of people have already jumped to this slide as we posted it. This is, we talked last year, it was a two-year program for storm to really bring storm up to a spot to where we could really hit it hard and invest. The only way to bring that down the wastewater rate is to create storm water opportunities for the water to actually flow so we don't have to keep pushing it into the wastewater system. And again, that's because we get billed based on volumes. If we send less wastewater to the wastewater system, we'll be billed less. So if you build the storm sewer pipe, the water can go there and we will get billed less for the wastewater system. And then on the water side. My next slide really talks about the process and the timing with respect to approving. We were hoping to have the budget package out on the sixth, but I think we communicated that we had to work around the region's budget schedule. So we had to delay and have the budget package out for the fourteenth. Next slide, uh this is just a comparison. I won't spend a lot of time. This is the same slide we talked about last month, where our taxes are versus where the other communities' taxes are. Our taxes at the city are actually below other communities on average. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see our water and wastewater rates are above other communities on average. And on the last slide here, with respect to this comparison, we add our water wastewater rates, we add our storm sewer fee, we add our property tax. You add up all of that. If you're living in the urban area, you're actually two hundred dollars less. It may not feel like that to all residents, but when you take the averages, we're actually two hundred dollars less. And then if you're in the rural area, you don't have obviously the water or the storm sewer charges. My next slide really talks about, and I think it hits to some of the questions already. If we don't do anything, we're going to be looking at potentially multiple years of ten percent increases or we we modeled ten to twelve for illustrative purposes. So you can see what a ten percent annual increase would be. It would be more than a doubling of the cost that we pay today in ten years from now, which is why the dealing with infrastructure today is so important for the city of Port Colburn. And the next slide really, we've already talked about this during the capital. It really just highlights, and this was a mechanism that we talked about, doing infrastructure work today is cheaper than doing infrastructure work tomorrow. Because most people recognize maybe the Bank of Canada has a target of two percent inflation, but construction inflation has historically been above that. So waiting to do the infrastructure hasn't really worked out in too many people's favor over a period of time. Last in this section is really just the risk to the budgets. These risks are the same as what we had when we talked about the levy and the capital. There's a lot of risks. There could be changes with respect to regulation that comes forward. There could be changes with respect to flow of water usage to which we've done. When we did the budget, we took this year's flows and then we applied the rates to it. So you will see when you look at revenue lines for each, it may not equal twelve percent because sometimes the flows were lower this year. So you take the twelve percent times the lower flow and you'll get to our revenue number. Next slide, and I can, I'm going to get into some percentages, size of budgets. Any questions at this point? Nope, okay. Our next slide goes into percentages. So this really talks about where the whole rate budget and where the money is is spent. So you can see and we make that note, twenty twenty-five, like year over year. So in twenty twenty-four, about twenty-seven percent of the total budget was being spent on capital. In twenty twenty-five, about thirty percent. And you will see that the personnel costs are kind of down a little bit. But it it is a little confusing because when you look at the individual departments, you're going to see personnel costs are up a little bit. It's not because we actually um hired more people. It's because we changed who was working within public works on just water and we moved some people that might have been on a road project or on a facility into the water budget going forward. And then you will highlight that the Niagara regions, even with the twelve percent increase, they're going down a little bit. It's because we're investing even more money in capital than we've previously done. So it's just, it's a percentage. There's a pie, it's a hundred percent, it's how you allocate it. And we're putting more into capital, slightly more than what um the region's increases. So that's that's just how that metric works.
I think we have a question, Councilor Bruno?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Brian, I had, I, it was actually before you turned the page on the slide to show the pie charts. I wanted to go back to the risks to the budget.
Okay.
So for a number of years, I've always thought that when interest rates were low, we should have debt financed and done a whole bunch of streets. And then we we waited and we got some grant money and we did Erie and the ones we're doing now, and now interest rates are on the decline. And as you mentioned, um, construction costs are going up faster than inflation. So I mean, I've said this for two or three council sessions and over ten years, but is there a way? Because systems can leak over here and you don't expect it. But is there a way to look at this that if construction inflation is six percent and you have all these leaks and you're paying more and the region's going up twelve percent, is there a business case to say you should borrow the money and go hard on building it because you're going to save those six percent increases? You're going to save at twelve percent on cleaning uh clean water? And so isn't the, isn't the way forward to go faster when you have six percent construction rates and twelve percent regional rates?
Uh, Paul? Through the deputy mayor to the counselor and council, absolutely. And I I just point out that I think you as a council are going faster. So um, you know, five years ago, I think I did my first budget with everybody and we were spending almost nothing on capital at that point in time because we were using the capital budget to balance the budget because there wasn't enough money to to balance it because the volumes weren't high enough. So, you know, a couple of years later, our budget's almost three point nine. But we've leveraged that because of debt financing some projects. And I just remind, and Steve is going to get some slides to go over it, he has over thirty million dollars of projects on the go. In addition to, that doesn't include anything with respect to servicing the East Service Lands. So this council has approved a lot and that department is working at full full capacity. So I think it it really comes down to, um, there is a report that's going to, I'm going to say it's four or five months away with the next leg of opportunities. And uh when that comes out, staff will be recommending to add even more projects to keep this going and take advantage of opportunities that you made reference to. So I I would, I would say that this council is going full out and there's going to be another opportunity to go full out again within a couple of months. Sorry. The next slide wastewater, uh you can see here we were at sixty-six, sixty-seven percent. We're at sixty-five. It's really because we're investing so much extra into some of the other areas. You will see personnel costs are a little bit higher as a percentage of the budget. It's again, it's not because we added people. We've just moved some of the costs because people were working on maybe facilities in this. And now because they're going to be working more on the water wastewater, we have to bill those costs here. And then with respect to some of the operational costs, that's really, we're we are hit with the same issues on water wastewater as we are on the levy, for example, insurance costs going up ten percent. So that's us dealing with with those costs. On the next slide, you can see the stormwater budget. The stormwater budget, the same scenario, but you don't see the region. Because when it comes to stormwater, there is no regional cost. The stormwater is us taking the water away so we don't have to send it to the region and get a bill. And that's where, I know the stormwater fee, it was a two-year, it was an increase over two years. It was significant. But that is the fee that gives the city the opportunity to build pipes that can have a long-term relate, a long-term impact on the wastewater budget. Removing the I and I from the wastewater system is the way to reduce the cost on the wastewater system. Then on this last slide, there's quite a bit, obviously, we show a number of years and you can go online and you can see, we have this slide like every single year. So you can go back to about twenty seventeen or sixteen when we, when when I first got here. You'll see that one number that somebody might ask me is, why does the Niagara region's number, if it's going up twelve percent, not show twelve percent increase on this sheet? And that's because our volumes on cer- on wastewater are actually down. So we're not necessarily getting hit with the full twelve percent. We're getting hit with a portion of that twelve percent. But we're still reinvesting our dollars back into capital. And we're going to look at a chart after Steve does his talk about the capital projects. And you're going to see that the reason for that is, and it's even though we're doing a lot on capital, it doesn't work that quickly. The real reason right now that the wastewater bill from the region or the volumes are down a bit is because the lake level hasn't been this low in quite some time. And the precipitation in the city hasn't been this low in quite some time. So the I and I going into the system is a lot lower. So we would have actually seen, and I know it's hard to believe, but a higher water wastewater bill if we didn't have this um weather effect where we saw the lower uh lake level.
Councilor Bruno?
Let me know early on if this is a Steve uh question or not. When I looked at those risk profile things, one was environmental. So you just said that this may be a low year in lake levels and in rainfall, which which may mean we're due for higher. And so I remember a report coming here that talked about these um back flap gates on the canal. So what I'm worried about it just as much as, you know, we do all this work and we get a major water break underground, we can't find it. And all the good works we're doing evens us out instead of having a surplus to pour back in the ground. If you know that environment makes a dramatic difference, you can't stop the rain from coming down, but we can apparently stop the backflow off the canal when lake levels go out. So to me, you want to cut off those jolts to the system that wipe out savings by doing all the good works you're doing. So are those gates a priority to at least reduce and knock off the peaks of those risks? Because, I mean, it would be very disheartening to have high uh canal levels and backflow in and wipe that out. I think both the average person on the street and the counselor starts to wear thin that, you know, these fixes are going to produce results and they get wiped out in a high canal or a storm. So where is that on, or do you want to save that to 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 when you're doing yours, Steve?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. I can just give you a quick update now if you're okay with that. So uh our, myself and our manager of our environmental services have actually had about three meetings so far over the last two weeks on this topic, specifically for backflow prevention in the canal walls. And we do have one of our project managers on it to be able to reassess all of the outlets to the canal right now. The initial round of outlet inspections proved pretty difficult to be able to access those locations. So right now, we're just trying to figure out alternative means. Uh, it could be through a two-day sonar to make sure that the pipe is okay and not um uh broken or silted in before we can actually do the work that would be need to happen to isolate the canal from those pipes. And there's also some modeling that's happening right now, which our um our manager of special projects, Joe, is actually looking at too. So the kind combined with those two is what's going to put us on the path to make sure that we're putting in the proper devices to isolate the canal from the upstream storm sewers.
Counselor?
Finish that, you can do it next time. I guess what I worry about there is unless you're working concurrently, the thing I've learned over the last few years is then you got to worry about the supply chain. So you guys identify the problem, come to us for money and you say you can't get the gates for two years. So maybe not tonight, but if you could enlighten us on, if we identify the problem, what's the turnaround time? I'd like to know that. Thank you.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So um I'm just guessing out here, but usually there's shop, they're fabbed up. So you'd have shop drawings that are created. Three to six months is typically what I've seen on past projects where we've actually had to put chambers in and be able to actually put um backflow prevention in a chamber, if that's the model that we would run with. There's also the model where we would actually attach them to the outside of the canal and have them installed at that point, which would require divers. At that point, they still require fabrication to meet the existing wall surface there. Uh, but there's just gaskets that are used in place to actually adhere them to the wall itself and then they're anchored in. So I don't see a massive two-year turnaround or anything to that extent, but there is a a certain period of time that should take months for fabrication of what's needed. And it will be custom.
Good. Councilor Baggy?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Just a follow-up on Councilor Bruno. What's the timeline on this, on this, the gates on the canal? Because the last last time we sat here, it wasn't last time, we were told that the new gates are manufactured in Germany and they take about a year to be made and sent here. And now, well, you're saying two to four months and depending on what we need, I guess.
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So that's, that's exactly right. It's all dependent upon what's needed. If we go with a chamber style, it's something that can be fabricated from a shop. If we go with an actual flap gate that's on the external on the wall itself, it can be purchased. There's also insert um flap gates that are actually inserted within the pipes themselves, which need to be custom made as well to fit the inside of a pipe, which do take a longer timeline. So it's all highly dependent upon the method of um backflow prevention. And to get to know the method of backflow prevention, we need to ensure that the pipes themselves are intact first. So that's the first step is getting in there either through sonar or sonar. So that's the first step is getting in there, either through sonar or sending divers up to be able to make sure that the pipes are intact and can accept that backflow prevention method.
Yep, uh, thank you. And the timeline for all this?
Through you Deputy Mayor, so I don't have an exact timeline right now because we're still working out the whether we're gonna go with 2D sonar and if they're able to do that, or if we do have to have divers. Um, we are trying to do it as fast as absolutely possible. Um, so we could give council an update in two to three months if that's okay with council, just to make sure that you're on track with us as we go through this.
To you, Mr. Deputy, I guess the first six months of 2025 is really close enough for me, but, uh, as long as we get it, uh, thank, I, I pre, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Bowles?
Hey, thank you. So also on this, uh, a slide, we do make reference to personnel costs, which I may mention. It's not because we've added more people to the city, it's more a function of, we've taken people that used to be in other areas of the city and we've now put their costs here instead because they're, they're concentrating specifically on water wastewater and storm. Um, from the operations, insurance is one of the larger drivers, but one of the other ones came out, council approved this during the infrastructure needs study. It was really to be able to do the ongoing flow monitoring and to be able to, I'm, I'm gonna get this wrong, Director Public Works can correct me, but really to take a look at how we segregate the, the, the mapping within the city so we can actually see when we have flows going through certain areas, we can see, does the work we're doing impact that? Because if we do work and we don't test to see if the flows were reduced, we'll never know if we're successful and we'll never know if we should be repeating that in other areas of the city. The other item is capital and reserves. You clearly see that the, both of those numbers are up quite significantly. We are not, we're pulling money from reserves and we're recommending to do all these capital projects to invest in capital. And the borrowing cost is going up with respect to the projects that we approved. Now, the one that I'll highlight, it has that E beside it in the middle, so that's really with respect to the lining one-third of the city's wastewater lines. So because we haven't had to issue the debt payment yet, we budgeted to make a $650,000 debt payment. So our recommendation is to use the 650, take the 10 million, pay it down. So before, instead of going out to the market and borrowing 10 million, we'll only borrow 9.35 million on that project. Because how the world works in municipal finances, you can only issue debt for how much you spend on a project. We're still spending 10 million in total, but because we didn't have to make the debt payment, we're gonna use the amount we would have paid for debt to put directly to the project. We're gonna pay cash for that. And then the next project you come, that does create borrowing room for you as a city and you'll just issue that debt on your next project going forward. So this project will only have 9.35 million on debt instead of 10. Your next project, you'll be able to reinvest that 650 into something else going forward. Um, I guess the next slide really looks at our debt out, oh, sorry, I, those are, those, just for anybody who wants to go back into detail, so if we go to the next slide, that was some, uh, written commentary with respect to that slide, which I just spoke about. And then the next slide here is our debt position. This really looks at how much debt we have today for water wastewater and then how much we've approved going forward. So this doesn't include with respect to the East Service Lands. This doesn't include crossing the canal and there is a report coming to council at the next council meeting. And, uh, actually, our manager of infrastructure is gonna give a small presentation with respect to what those costs and estimate costs are gonna look like with respect to that project. So that'll be at the next council meeting. Uh, it doesn't include if we did do, we talked about a childcare center, if there's some debt that we might have to do that and then get paid back, it doesn't include that or the Marina dredging. But it does include all the debt that you've approved to date. And you can see that the ministry, the province basically says you can spend 25 percent of your total budget on debt. Right now, we're at approved debt 5.5. So you have the room, as Council Bruno said, to approve projects and approve debt on them. And as the Director of Public Works says, said, the next report's coming early in the new year and you'll have an opportunity to approve more projects to keep the, the cycle going. On our next slide, you'll see our total reserves. I will highlight that if you were to look at kind of what we've done some work to say what, where our reserves should be, um, we've put forward that a reserve really should look at being able to replace a whole kilometer of pipe and be able to withstand a 10 percent change in your budget. And the reason the 10 percent change in your budget comes is, I, I think from time to time, you'll see on our, uh, under correspondence on the council, you'll see the regions approved water wastewater budgets, or you'll see the water wastewater reconciliation. And I think it started to rain or something very loud outside and we've all noticed that, um, for our water budget. Um, you'll, what you end up seeing with respect to that is, those correspondence will show that when you have a change in water level of the lake and you have a change in precipitation like it's raining today, our payment to the region can fluctuate by more than 10 percent. So our, our budget's in the five and a half to six million range. So it's very possible that if we do have a very wet year, that that payment would get readjusted to actual and our budget would be off by up to $600,000. So it's important that we maintain a reserve because if that happens, we have to be able to fill that hole in that year. And that's where there is, we're not quite at the 10, we're not quite at the reserve levels that we would suggest, but we do have enough to withstand that 10 percent right now if that was to happen. So just for council too. On the next slide, um, I will, I'll go over this one, I got two more slides and then I think our Director of Public Works will, will get up and get into details of projects. So he, you might ask him to come back to the slide, but this slide, and I, I don't, I don't, historically, we haven't gone into a huge amount of detail, but it does show the activity that's going on in the water wastewater department. And if we need to, we can come back to, to this. Our next slide really goes, and this is for anybody to reference with respect to our water purchase versus water build. So that's where I'd mentioned there was about 46 percent water loss or 44 percent water loss. So basically, it's kind of reversed on this slide. This says, well, we have water purchased and how much of that did we build? We built 55 percent of all the water we purchased from the distributor, which is the Niagara Region, which means there's a 46 percent water loss. Our goal is to get that to 15 percent. As we bring that in, we will have the opportunity to be able to do infrastructure and that can relieve rate pressure going forward. Um, you can see the trend line and the trend line has been getting a little bit worse in, in recent years and that's where a lot of work is continuing. The fact that we have, uh, six or seven water mains, I think there's 9.4 million dollars of water mains being replaced over the next year or two, um, many of those, some of those have broken ground now, that will have an impact. The next slide really looks at water volumes. So I always find this interesting that Port Colborne has about 4.1 percent of the Niagara Region population, but we have historically paid more than 4 percent of the total water budget because our volume is over 4 percent of the total, um, Niagara Region. That despite the fact that one-third of our city isn't even on water. They're in the rural area and they don't have water in wastewater system. On the next slide, we have the data for wastewater treated volumes versus, uh, precipitation. And you can see in recent years, our wastewater volumes are down as well as the precipitation within the city is down. And the next slide shows you water trends for the lake and our water treatment. So as the water treatments come down, in line with how the lake has come down. And this is where I just caution, and I, it was, I think, very astute of Council Bruno to point out that we've actually already taken in some of the benefit of maybe lower volumes, but it's just because of nature. And if we don't continue to fix some of the infrastructure, if nature swings the other way, our volume pressure could cause the rates to go even higher, which is why dealing with the infrastructure can't wait. Next slide is really wastewater volumes and it shows that we're about four and a half to 5 percent, depending on the year, of the total, uh, volumes at the Niagara region's plants versus about 4.1 percent of the population. And again, about a third of our population isn't on water or wastewater. And having, I don't, is there any questions on that data? Our Director of Public Works can come up and also answer a lot of questions. I know Cassandra, our manager of water wastewater is here and helps oversee a lot of that data collection, so happy to do that. And on that note, our Director of Public Works, thank you for stepping in and going over these capital projects.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, council. So, um, we have a number of slides to present to you tonight and they're gonna go over some of the initiatives and projects that we're fulfilling within, uh, the city of Port Colborne. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about water, wastewater and storm systems and what, uh, what work has happened to date and where the plans are for the future. Um, so if we can push forward one slide. Perfect. So just to start off on our water mains, um, we do have our capital projects that are currently underway right now. Uh, we have a water main program that's being, uh, constructed right now with Homewood and Davis currently under construction and, uh, Berkeley Street, Berkeley Avenue and West Street that are proposed for construction by the end of this year as well. Um, so some of the restorations will turn into the spring, but, uh, that work is being currently implemented at this time. Moving into, uh, 2025, we do have...
Council Bruno, a question on that?
Just wondering on Homewood and Davis, have you discovered they were, that those pipes were really bad, really leaking a lot, like when they've actually uncovered them so that we know there will be some significant savings there?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So we haven't, uh, uncovered the new or the old water main quite yet, just the new ones installed at this time. So what we'll be doing is abandoning the old one. But what we can do is, um, take some sections and actually cut sections of the old main out, just so council can be aware of what's happening. Um, when you do look at some of the GIS mapping that we have right now, because we do track all of the break data back from the seventies, we do see Homewood and surrounding area water mains, um, basically plastered with breaks that have happened over time. And they do have a number of repairs along each section. So I'd be confident that it is a mixed mash of cast iron and PVC and fittings and couplings that are holding it together at this time. And that's the, the exact reason why Homewood was actually flagged for replacement in that area. So, um, just, uh, a little bit of a look into our 2025 water main replacement program. Um, uh, we're looking at North Crescent, South Crescent, Jefferson and Ash Street. It's basically a whole smaller subdivision that's planned and that's based off of fire flow deficiencies and also the water main breaks that I was mentioning earlier that we track. Um, but just to give council a little bit of, um, understanding into what, how we're looking at things, is that with the 2024 program, it was approximately about a 9.4 million dollar project to do those areas. Um, the initial tenders ended up going out and the design costs were less and we had to come back to council for more money at that time. And a lot of that money was driven higher by, uh, the fact that there is high bedrock levels in the area. There was contamination also in the area in the right of way and then there's also high groundwater. So then there's, uh, de-watering that needs to take place. All of those, uh, entities actually drive the cost up. Other municipalities don't always have to contend with those issues, but we do here. So some of the per meter pricing we see is quite a bit higher. And when we're looking at the 25 program and beyond, we're looking at alternative means through either lining our water mains or doing a spray and place liner inside of them. So it wouldn't be directly replacing or abandoning, but reusing that existing pipe there, reaming it out and then putting a liner in the middle. And that's what's gonna save costs to be able to actually implement what our water financial plan, uh, pitched to council earlier this year when we had the previous pricing before this, uh, last project. So we are looking through at alternative means to be able to make sure that we can still fulfill council's strategic plan within the budget that we have outlined to date. And with that, we might even be able to implement a few years sooner than what was originally proposed by doing it through this method as well. Um, and just while we're talking about per meter pricing and, uh, projects, just in terms of, um, uh, Council Baguio's question before, we do have our wastewater lining, uh, we were able to look it up, it's about 250 to 300,000 dollars a kilometer to do the wastewater lining. Um, when we're comparing construction costs to lining costs on the water system as we're evaluating right now, we're almost looking at a half, uh, a half, uh, cost of about 50 percent. Um, we're actually looking at about, probably about 6.4 million to open cut the 2025 program where if we're lining it, it could cost just north of 3 million. So it is quite a bit of savings, especially on the design side and things get expedited that much quicker being able to do it. There's still excavations that need to take place, just to a much lesser extent than full cut. Okay, let me go to the next one. Okay. So, um, we did wanna talk a little bit about water loss. Um, we know this is high on council's, um, priority list and it is on high on our priority list too. So, uh, earlier this spring, we ended up bringing forward a few initiatives, one being the artificial intelligent hydrants that we are going to be installing throughout, um, certain subdivisions in Port Colborne. And, uh, those have been ordered and they're actually set for installation this year. Uh, so next month they'll start installation. Those will be installed in the Homewood area. There's still other streets in the area that do have a number of breaks that have happened in the past and there are breaks that happened over the last few years. So we wanna be able to monitor those and be able to determine if something happens, we wanna know about it as soon as possible to prevent, or to fix it right away. Um, the next one is the satellite imagery, so that's some, another one we brought forward in the spring. And basically that one has been awarded already and that does come with some, uh, flights that need to happen to take aerial imagery at a time, so that does take, it's a little more timely, but that is planned to be completed for the spring. And then one of the big ones that Director Bowles mentioned earlier too was just evaluating our water meters. So, um, every municipal property that, uh, has water to it has a meter that's tracked and that's how we end up billing those properties. Um, what we've done is we've gone through every single meter to determine if there's any, any differences in, uh, residential versus industrial versus commercial. And we've done comparisons to see, um, if there's any anomalies essentially within the billings. So we've actually identified a number of properties and those inspections are going to be starting in December to determine, um, what could be causing those anomalies. It could be installation methods, it could be, um, uh, you know, bypasses that are installed or in use or not locked out. There's different, uh, issues that could be there, so we're gonna start those. And we're also gonna pay some attention to our large meter users. So we're actually gonna go out, we're gonna do some inspections and surveys to determine how their meters have been installed, uh, to make sure that they're actually installed correctly and the meters can read correctly based on the installation. Because sometimes you can have fittings that are a little too close and it's going to make the water turbulent and it's not actually going to read correctly. So those are all things that we need to investigate and just to cross them off our list to make sure that we're confident that they're reading correctly and accurate. Um, and new, we haven't mentioned this one before, but we are gonna be, uh, purchasing a number of data loggers. And, uh, essentially what the data loggers are in the top, uh, picture there, you can actually see it's like a small pop can almost, uh, size-wise and has a magnet on one side that'll, one side that'll attach to the water system. And similar to the AI hydrants, it'll actually listen to, uh, the system 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And this is how we can really get into the nitty-gritty part of leak detection. Um, right now, we've had contractors and our, our consultants and also our staff do leak detection throughout the system as a whole. But it also adds a lot of subjectivity to the leak detection because each person hears things differently, they do it a little bit differently. These are basically consistent all the time. It takes the subjectivity out of leak detection and, um, it monitors it back to a computer system that we can actually look and determine if there's any anomalies to ensure that we're responding to any sources of leaks or alterations in the system as soon as possible. And lastly, we just have the, the digitizing of the, uh, the compliance system for water wastewater. Now it's putting, uh, moving from our Lotus Mills, uh, historical databases into a new digital system. Um, so if you're okay Deputy Mayor, maybe I'll just stop and ask if there's any questions on the water side before we move to wastewater.
Sure. Questions, council? No, you're good to go. Whoop. So, sorry you were too late. No, go ahead, Council Elliot.
I just wanna ask Steve a question that Counselor Danch asked me and I didn't have the answer. Uh, on the projects, there was a 100-meter section on West Street. Where is that taking place? When is it taking place? Don't remember seeing that.
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor. So that one on West Street is actually from Sugarloaf Street, south. It's a, a leg of pipe that's been, that, uh, is being installed right now. It shouldn't have any major impacts over West Street. It will be done over this winter, um, so there won't be any major impact. It doesn't lead to anywhere but the old, uh, city yard that we... be any major impact. It doesn't lead to anywhere but the old city yard that we used at one point. And it's actually where the contractor's utilizing their home base right now as they're installing the remainder of the water mains in the city. So now we'd love to jump into our wastewater projects, and we really wanted to start by highlighting the wet weather program that council approved earlier this spring. You know, any good, all of the information, all of the lining that's happening, whether it's on main lines or on laterals, it's all based off of a good wet weather management program. It's based off finding where the issues are and determining what the actions are to fix those issues. And this is a good example of a number of smoke testing within different areas. And it's actually highlighted, I think it was 83 cleanouts that need to be repaired within the city that are actually already being constructed. But essentially, there were holes that lead straight to the wastewater system that are either draining people's front lawns or even driveways in some cases. So that's infiltration that's coming straight into the system because there weren't caps on top. There was a couple of cases where foundations, you can actually see in some of the images, there's smoke coming up near the foundations. And that means that basically something's coming in from the sanitary sewer. It could be weeping tiles along the building's footings, or it could be rain leaders that are actually going straight into the ground and into the wastewater system. So those are all things that we're flagging and we're documenting within our mapping programs, and then we're doing disconnections to be able to fix those issues. And then you can also see at the bottom right, we have a flow monitoring program, smoke testing, and that all leads to our priority lining areas. And as Director Bowles mentioned before, this is what's helped establish where our priority areas are within the city of Port Colbrun, and where we should concentrate our efforts for the maximum return on investment. Moving on to the main line rehabilitation, we're going to have a slide on main line. There will be one on our laterals and then one on manholes. But for this part, the rehabilitation, we actually did 1,800 meters within 2023. So that's directly lining pipes within the wastewater system. And in 2024, we ramped up significantly and completed about 8,300 meters, and we did 10 spot repairs with that as well. And in 2025, we're going to be doing over 9,000 meters again. So this image right here, you can actually see the green areas are the pipes that have been lined today. And you can imagine doubling that up or making significant headway to be able to actually rehabilitate the majority of the system. Moving on to the lateral rehabilitation program. So by the end of this year, we'll have 600 laterals that have been inspected. And basically, what we'll be doing is reviewing those as they come in, and then we'll be doing a repair program at the same time, too. It could be a lining program that actually happens, or it could be spot repairs that need to be excavated. That'll be determined through analysis of the information that's brought forward. For 2025, we do have 2,000 inspections that are planned. And you can actually see, and I'll point this out now, is that on the left side of the drawing, all the green areas, those are all individual wastewater laterals that are planned to be inspected. Those directly correlate to some of the areas that are priority, but also don't have storm systems. And that's where we're kind of, there's a map a little later that we'll piece that together. But those are the locations where we're seeing lots of influent infiltration, so that's where we're concentrating our efforts at this time. You can also see some of the darker red spots. Those are the 600 that are being completed already and have been assessed. Some have actually already been rehabilitated.
Council Bruno?
Steve, I remember one time when we had a presenter here that talked about pretty wild numbers, that a lot of leaks could be on the laterals, because like up to 50% or something. When you find these leaks in the lateral on the private side, so are we going through now, and we're going to line those?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. So the plan is to line them just to save cost, if it's at all possible. In some cases, I'm expecting that there will be excavation that's required. But yes, we will be looking to fix those, and we will be talking to homeowners about going directly to the building phase, too, not just to the property line as many do. In those cases, if we're only going to the property line, we're not resolving the issue on the private side, which means the issue is still going to be the city issue at the end of the day, and we're still going to pay for the infiltration that's happening on their side. So the right thing to do is to go to the building phase to be able to line that entire lateral so that the issues are fully resolved.
The reason I'm asking this question is because, you know, there becomes a point when we're putting dollars that could advance more city kilometers, which is great. You find a leak on the private side. Is there not a system where you say you've got a lateral leak, Mr. Mann, you need to fix it, or you need to fix it by a certain date? Because otherwise, does it become... I have a lateral leak. I call the city and say, well, you line me. I just worry about, does this evolve into nobody needing to fix their lateral because the city will come along and line it? Or is it an idea that we can line it at less cost than you fixing it, and the homeowner still gets a good deal? Because now he knows about lining, which he never heard of before. I mean, when I look at those building permits thing, a guy knows he's got a leak, some pump's running. He comes in here, he calls Enberg or somebody else, and they fix his lateral. What's this got the potential of doing? Because I just don't want to see, I mean, I want it fixed, obviously, but for every dollar that goes on the private side is a dollar or less to go on the public side. So have you guys thought all that through? Is there more to come on policy on that, or what?
So through you, Deputy Mayor, there's definitely some thought that's gone into the different avenues of implementing the program. There's, I'll put it just for example, out in the Clark area, which you can see on the right side of the map, there's about 90 laterals that were inspected to date, and about a third of them actually had some pumps that were connected. So there were, and there's deficiencies within those laterals. So there could be a significant amount of laterals that we would be telling the public, you need to fix these and do them. It is something that we could offer at a discounted rate, or not, I shouldn't say discounted rate, but at a rate that the municipality has, because there is benefit to having the lateral as one solid entity going straight from the main line all the way in as far as possible. So opposed to having a separate contractor come in, dig up their side, and then still have a connection that could pose a leak in the future. So there is benefit to doing it all at once. On the terms of having the homeowner pay for it, it's definitely something we could investigate. It will add a significant amount of time to be able to do it, and a lot of the cost for lateral rehabilitation is in the mobilization as well. So when you look at it from that perspective of each individual lateral, the cost to extend a couple extra meters may be irrelevant compared to the mobilization cost for five feet meters versus seven meters, because then it's just material cost at that point, too. So the thought is that it's not that much cost extra to be able to go that extra length, because we as a municipality are already going to be there based off the deficiencies that we found.
Council Baguette?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Through you. I was sort of surprised when you mentioned Clark Street, the laterals that have potential of leaking. Are we talking clay pipes still for wastewater? Or is it Clark Street subdivision, or not subdivision, but streets that were made with plastic?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So in that area as a, in general, over the years, I have seen a couple of different laterals that have been going to people's houses. I have seen clay laterals that have been out there, and I've also seen tar paper laterals, which have actually eroded, too. So that's where we start getting into the conversation of can we actually line a lot of these? And in some cases, we may not be able to line them, and we may be putting a new lateral in at that point for them.
Yeah, through you, Mr. McCray. I know on my street, Charlotte Street, it was clay, and I changed it over. So imagine a lot of this city's municipality has clay, its tree roots and cracking, and I know there are a lot of leaks.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So these, basically with the inspections, just to cap the lateral rehab conversation, we will be inspecting them consistently moving forward. As we move from area to area, we'll be implementing construction directly after. So it won't be waiting for 2,000 laterals to be completed. It'll be waiting for 20 to 50 laterals to be completed, and then having our forces move in to rehabilitate those areas. And on the maintenance wall side of things, we have gone through, and we've surveyed every manhole within the city, not only on wastewater, but also on the storm sewer side as well. Right now, we're running through the analysis of that to be able to determine what the rehabilitation project needs to be. So that is planned for early 2025, where we'll be able to go in and actually rehabilitate the maintenance walls that require rehabilitation. In most cases, that's going to be pressure grouting, a crack or a seam that's within that manhole, just to stop the leaking from coming in, so the excess groundwater from penetrating into that maintenance hole and then entering the wastewater system. And just in case there's any questions on the wastewater, I'll just take a brief stop.
Council, any questions at this time? Seeing none, carry on.
So moving into the storm sewer, we do have one of the biggest data gathering projects for our infrastructure is the storm sewers, where we've actually gone out and we've done an assessment on every single maintenance wall, every pipe that's in our system to determine where it is, what it consists of, what the elevations are. And that's all going to help us build a model of the system to determine designs in the future, how the storm system actually operates, how the outfalls operate, and what happens if we do put a certain backflow prevention device at one location versus another. And that'll actually build a model for us to tell us where there will be issues or pinch points and what needs to be upgraded to make sure the system is intact and fully supported. So that has gone underway. There's still a number of locations similar to the backflow right now, those backflow preventers that are on the canal wall. Those inspections being underwater, that's part of the next phase that we're currently implementing right now, along with a number of other storm sewers that are actually surcharged in the system. So when you look in some of the maintenance walls, you'll see the water is completely up, and the pipes are actually fully submerged underwater. So those are the cases where it's a lot more extensive. We either have to drain those systems by plugging them in certain areas, which gets very costly, or we use different methodology to be able to do an assessment and determine what the condition is to see if anything needs to be done and what can be done on the system, especially before we reinstated any roadways or any other infrastructure in the area. So that is, that Phase 2 is underway right now. That's exactly what I was mentioning before with the canal walls. This is also a part of that, too, any of the submerged pipes as well. On terms of capital programs, so we do have two projects that are fully designed right now, and one's being tendered out next month, and one has already been awarded and up to start. That is the Clarence Street Storm Sewer, which was a collapse that happened within the right-of-way. It was too extensive to actually do a normal operational repair, so the entire pipe didn't need to get replaced. And that is between West Street and King Street, and that's all aimed up to start next month, and it'll run into May for restorations. The second one is Olga Street, which has similar circumstance, where there was a collapse that happened. And upon further inspection, you can see that the corrugated steel pipe was actually rotted right at the middle or spring line of the pipe, which caused us to have the need to redesign and be able to replace the pipe as a whole. So that one's also underway. And lastly, we have, I wanted to just quickly touch on our Stormwater Master Plan. And this plan is what's actually going to tie all of this information together, all of the condition assessment data that we've gathered to build an oil pipe system, to actually do future designs of the storm system and see how it reacts based on certain storms. It will tie everything together, and that's planned for the end of 2025. But because of that, similar to our influent infiltration programs, we haven't waited for the master plan to be completed. We've done a lot of research. We've done a lot of condition assessments. We have staff that have worked here for years and understand where the issues are. So we were able to make some determinations as to what's happening in the system to date. And this map that you see today is, it's a very powerful map. This is kind of what we've been working at for the last year, and that's putting some of our influent infiltration priority areas on a map, categorizing them and prioritizing them. And it's also laying now our storm sewer condition assessment that's been verified in the field. So now this is where we can start saying, let's put some storm sewers in areas that don't have storm sewers right now, because there's going to be a benefit to have inflow or infiltration, mostly inflow, taken out of the system and put it into the storm sewer. So this is where we really start moving forward in the right direction and combining our efforts to make sure we're making the right decisions.
Steve, I think we have a question. Council Bruno?
Steve, when you mentioned West Street in that section, and you mentioned Olga Drive, what I remember about those two streets, and maybe I've got the wrong area on the street, was they've just been paved. And so like, on the West Street one, is that like going to be in front of Walters in that area?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So it's actually, it's on Clarence Street, which hasn't been paved yet between West and King.
Okay.
It will involve the south side of the sidewalk being removed and replaced. The sidewalk on the west side is planned to be retained right now because a section of that was done in front of the old city hall. And then on Olga, you are 100% right. It was paved. Luckily enough, the storm sewer is off to the shoulder and the side of the road, so there won't be a major impact to the road that was reinstated a couple years ago.
I guess my question on that, now that you're getting this data, are you interfacing that with your roads program? So now you know what's bad underground. You might have a bad road, but you're not going to do the road until you get to the, it may be wastewater, it may be water or storm. So does that all, is that all sync, or it's just easy enough to control with the staff? Because you're only doing so many paving streets, and you look, when you go to pave that, at the drawings, or sorry, at the CTC scan and all that stuff? So that's basically a manual situation?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So it is manual right now, but the goal is to have this completed and pushed all into mapping software and have our capital, our future outlooks within that program so that they do overlap. So it is taking the manual entry out of it. It is automating it so that everyone within the municipality, whether it's public work staff or planning staff, understand where the programs are going and what the issues may be in the future, too. So this is where I call this a very powerful map. It's getting us to the spot where we all need to be, and we do get excited about it because it takes a lot of the risk out of our decisions on a day-to-day and make sure that we're making the right decisions and the best decisions for the city of Port Colbrun.
Council Baguette?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I know this is the right time and place, but first of all, I'd just really thank you guys on behalf of council. I know yourself and your staff are this, I and I, you guys have been right on it, and we do really appreciate it, and keep up the good work. My one question, actually started with Council Bruno a while ago. I jumped on his bandwagon, and it's talking about shovel-ready projects in case grant money comes up. I know there's talk about provincial government, maybe provincial election coming up very, very soon, and the liberal government and the federal, who knows what those guys are going to be doing. But the potential for grant money, because everybody not saying they want to buy our votes, but grant money season come a lot easier when there's election announcements. And do we have projects ready or close to being shovel-ready other than, say, Olga and Clark, like the next step over? Or do we have to wait for more studies?
Through you, Deputy Mayor. So that's a great question. It kind of leads me into a question that I was going to mention earlier when I talked to you about the map and the three hour... three hour areas that you actually see that are highlighted in black right now, based off the internal consultation and understanding of what's happening in the system and not waiting till the full Stormwater Master Plan's completed, those are the three areas that we should be focusing on based on I and I priorities and storm sewers that are in the area or lack of storm sewers that are in the areas, depending on the situation. So those are the three that we're going to recommend in the future that we move forward with. And then we can have those projects that are shovel-ready. So we've done the homework to do this. The only part is doing the designs, any kind of environmental assessments that need to be completed to be able to do that. But studies don't really need to be done at this point. We have the education and the, the knowledge to be able to move forward with the right projects. So this is kind of where it also puts the proof in the pudding to say, we've outlined what we know to date. We've overlaid it with our I and I issues, our storm issues, and now we have areas that we're recommending. Some of these are very big areas. So they are massive storm sewer areas that need to be done as a whole. It does take time to plan those out and to be able to design them. And that's why, as Director Bowles mentioned earlier, we're looking to do this early next year to be able to propose these options so that we can start moving at least with the design work so that we can have ready designs to be able to fund those. And in certain cases, we want to be able to have council support to move in those areas to get funding to make sure that we can get those done sooner.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Further questions at this time? Steve, go ahead.
Yep. And that, that's, those are the slides we have and Director Bowles will be coming up. Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. So I made one note just for clarification because Steve did a great job, but I think Counsel Bruno asked a question. I don't know if we fully answered it. And that was with respect to when we actually have a lateral that's on the private property. We do anticipate, because I think when our Director of Public Works was speaking, he was talking about when he's in an area and it's identified as a high problematic zone, we're going to do that work. But we do have plans to come back with a report that would establish a bylaw that would say when, how do we define those areas? Because we do, and Counsel, remember, we do have a grant program for citizens, for residents across the city that they can apply and do their own. So our goal is to go and do some very complicated, maybe not complicated, but the high impact areas. And that's what our program's for. It's not necessarily to replace everybody's private property. So the director's not recommending a program that you just call up and we'll go and replace anybody's private property lateral. This is, we have a program if you want to replace your own lateral, but this will be in, in areas that we know are of such high problems that if we don't fix it, our system as a whole will suffer. So we will come back with a report to kind of highlight and very succinctly define that. So that way Counsel knows where the difference is. And if somebody calls in and wants the grant, they'll know where they sit on the difference as well. So our, I just got to flip a couple of slides. Guess Steve did those. That was great. So our next slide, we have water, wastewater and storm. So just, this is just, the next slide is just the water budget individually. Earlier, we talked about the water waste and storm altogether. The big observation up here is while we are looking at a 12% increase, total revenue will go up 14% on water. That's really because we have growth in the city. Because we have some growth in the city, you will see the rate slightly, or the total revenue coming in slightly higher with respect to that. But if we flip to the next, or sorry, when we look at water, I've also included the water slide that was with respect to the capital budget that was approved last month. Just so anybody looking at the water wastewater budget, they can see the projects that Council's approved and the projects that our Director of Public Works was talking about. On the next one, wastewater. On the wastewater, we actually looked at everybody's actual forecast, what they were using. And then we forecasted that out, applied our 12% rate increase. And you will see net revenue is actually going to be lower with respect to that because we are seeing on the wastewater side with respect to the fix versus variable adjustment, less. And you will see on the variable side, so industrial and commercial properties do pay on a variable basis still. It was the industrial, it was the multi-res that we made fix. We did, we left, and Counsel will remember this and anybody watching will, may not remember, but you can go back and check. We didn't move commercial and industrial because the worry was their volume use, because some people can use from the canal, some people can pull from other locations. They could push more water into the system. I think there was some concern and some recommendations to keep them on a variable fixed model because of that. So you will see some of the volume that is going through the system is lower from some of our locations. So that, that means that we, our revenue actually isn't going up as much as what the rate increases. And then on the next slide, we have wastewater. And these were the projects that Counsel approved at the last capital budget meeting. And then the next slide is storm water. And storm water, again, you'll see it's slightly above what that rate increase is. It's because we are adding users onto the system and we've invested all the funds. And I think anybody that was watching the presentation, I know Counsel, based on questions asked, see the work that Public Works is doing significantly on storm. That is where our biggest investment is going to be if we want to tackle the wastewater budget and the wastewater increases. We have to tackle the storm budget. So we don't, the, the future storm increases will not be this, but this was part of the two-year plan to get to where we needed to be, to make significant impact going forward. The next slide is storm sewers, and this was the projects and our Director of Public Works has spoken to that. My, if we skip the next slide and just the agenda, this slide here is really talking about if you look at water, wastewater and storm together, and you were looking, well, let's look to the future, what's the budget forecast. So I won't ask to switch, jump to the next slide, but the next slide, if anybody wants to read, does have some of the assumptions laid out. Right now, the assumption is the region's rate methodology doesn't change. So if the region's rate methodology changes, this illustration changes quite considerably potentially. We have tried to look at what the infrastructure cost need is going to be to grow, to be able to tackle some of the projects that we know Public Works would be presenting additionally in the new year. And we are, so we are right now forecasting at 10% growth rate with respect to water, wastewater and storm going forward. But again, to be able to offset that, we have lots of ways. Growth can offset that. We have a change in, the rate methodology can offset that. We could have a change in the impact. So as we do the capital improvements, if we do have an improvement in the flows that we're going, as Steve's group goes out and looks at the meters that we've identified with anomalistic readings, if Steve can, Director Public Works replaces those meters and we reduce our unbilled water, all of those things can reduce that bill. What we've identified though is right now, based on our capital program to get the capital works done that's being identified, and what we've identified is what the rate, the region's 10-year modeling is for water and wastewater. This is what the number would be. So this, I would say going forward is our baseline. And if we can bring our water volume and our wastewater volume down, we can improve this baseline, or if we can add more users, or if we can change the rate methodology with respect to the region. So those were the key, that's the key assumption. And we've identified on the following slide, which public can read, Counsel can read, and I know you already have read those assumptions. But the, the key assumption with respect to all of this is we're running off of the region's 10-year plan and we haven't adjusted for any change in the potential regions model. And you can see there, the majority of our budget is cost to the distributor. In 2025, it's almost $9 million, growing anywhere between $6,000 to $700,000 a year. It's our largest growth component. And then as we go forward, well, so that's the slide where I wrote everything out. The next slide is multi-year capital forecast. This really illustrates, based on those assumptions, what the capital budget would grow by. We've called it all capital. And I think some councils have noted that as we go forward and Public Works presents new projects, we're going to split that between capital and debt, which means that we're not just going to do, where it might say in 2026, you'd get $5 million in capital. That might, once we adjust it to debt, might actually turn into 15 million in capital because a portion of that would become debt financed. And we'll continue to do that model as the final projects come forward to you. And then I, one of my last slides here is really looking forward and tasks that are happening within the water wastewater system. First and foremost, the water wastewater review that's, that's going on. We have reviewed wastewater fixed charges. We have been asked by some to take a look at if multi-residential properties that are done and built and operating as a not-for-profit should have some sort of granting program or some sort of adjustment to how the wastewater bill is billed to them. So I identified it to Counsel that we have told those constituents that we would take a look and we would bring it back to Counsel to take a look in the future. We do have some not-for-profits and we did change our billing and the individuals all agree that for normal condos, normal apartments, it makes sense. There has been some question if it is subsidized housing, if we should have the same model. So we are going to be doing some research and in the new year, we will bring back some, some information on that for you to consider, given that we haven't heard that from some constituents. Continue with the water wastewater projects. We continue to review the fee structure. We do as a city explore some of the land development within the city and that's the growth discussion. If we add more water users, we have more water wastewater and storm payers. We are looking at the multi-year capital. Right now, we have an idea. You can see the multi-year funding. As we come forward next year, you will have multi-year capitals. So you'll be able to see not just this year, but how the projects will start to line up because our data is there. And as we do that, the KPIs continue to grow. You saw a slide on KPIs, but you're going to see a lot more slides on KPIs between districts going forward. We continue to hands the GIS and we thank Counsel for that investment. And we do look to, to continue to share more and more of the GIS mapping that we have public. So that way developers can use it as well as anybody that maybe has a suggestion or lives in a neighborhood can understand how their neighborhood is impacting this. And then to review the storm sewer boundary bylaw. We do intend bringing back an update to the storm sewer boundary bylaw in the new year. And that's only because the, the current bylaw doesn't identify, I'll call it a rider, that if a new subdivision is built and has a storm sewer, we don't move the boundary. So right now, it's possible that a new subdivision can be built outside of the storm sewer boundary with a storm sewer, but it's not in the boundary. So we have to bring back a housekeeping, uh, update to that bylaw to fix that. So we'll do that in the new year. And the last one that's not on this list, but it's something that we have had an opportunity to talk to many. And in 2023, the Communications Department did a great job with Water Wednesdays. Something that the Director and I have been, Public Works have been talking about is starting in the new year to find some dates that we can have some public open houses. And that way, we can invite the public in, we can have some stations, we can put up some of these maps, some of these locations, and the public can come and talk to us about this. We have had a number and Public Works has had a number of public open, not open houses, but within certain areas, we've had the opportunity to go in and talk to constituents. And I think once we have those one-on-one conversations, it helps individuals understand the progress. And they can ask their specific questions and we're there to, to answer them. So we are looking at that opportunity, potentially at the Health and Wellness Center, potentially towards the beginning, end of January, most likely beginning of February kind of time. And just for Counsel to know, the first bill where these rates impact, it's January, but that bill doesn't go out till February. So if we can host the events before the bill goes out, I think that makes a lot of sense too, from a timing perspective. So on, on that, I think two slides in gives us our click-click. Staff, we say thank you. I think the Finance Department, our Manager of Finance, Deputy Treasurer and our Supervisor of Financial Reporting, who really do a lot of the omens work to, to bring this together with our, with Joe, our Manager of Infrastructure and, and Public Works. So on that, thank you. And I think maybe our next slide, it's just a reminder of the recommendation, but we are still take any questions, comments, recommendations.
Counsel, just before we move on to that recommendation, is there any discussion, comments, questions you haven't asked? Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Through you, Brian. I, I guess the one question I have is when people see the increase and all of the projects that are underway or soon to be underway or coming up in the next few years, they're great projects. A lot of work is going into them. And we're going to save money from being charged against us by the region, right? All, most of the projects that we're working towards are cost savings for the city. But those cost savings don't translate into relief for the taxpayer. Because their bill isn't getting any cheaper. We're just taking the money that we, that we're saving, that the region bills us and plowing that back into reserves or into other projects. So a lot of people are going to say, all of the work that we're doing is supposed to save us money. But there's no relief on their bills. How and when and is there a way that the rate payers will see relief on their bills in the years to come? And I know that may be a crystal ball question. But things are getting more expensive, not only water, wastewater, taxes. The cost of living is getting more expensive for everybody. And there's a number of people that don't have any route to increase their income. So it's becoming more and more difficult to stay in their homes and live the lifestyle that they were used to. How do we provide relief to our citizens and can we? Or is there a point in time down the road where we might be able to see that?
Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, through the Deputy Mayor, to the Counselor, it's a crystal ball question. So starters, what we have is we, we have put in this budget, the four-year forecast, right? The four-year forecast says, based on what we're putting together for, for Public Works to be able to tackle the infrastructure, it, it outlines all of those costs and that becomes the baseline. So it's not a baseline that anybody wants to hear. It's a 10% baseline. So if we are successful, potentially it's not a 10% baseline anymore. So we come back and say it's eight because we're successful. Not an answer you want to hear, but it is a baseline to a different rate. So that's one of the reasons we put out the base, the, the illustration example based on the information we have right now. Realistically, you will find this rate come down. And in, at some point in time, it's not going negative, but the earlier graph that I have is if we tackle it early and we tackle the infrastructure, we stop the significant increases and we start normalizing and come down. In our, I apologize, that 10 years or it's 10 or 15 years. We did 10-year water, water financial projection. We brought it to Counsel. Counsel approved it, not approving the budget, but you approved it as an illustrative example of what could happen. And we do show what you get, as you get to the back of the 10 years, these increases come down substantially. And then it really comes down to what's the mix of, how does the region bill us? And that's kind of that next leg. And the other leg is what's our growth look like? So when we come to Counsel next week, we're going to be talking about servicing the East Service Lands. The East Service Lands, once built out, even after the investments that have already been announced, can open up about 1,000 acres of land. Those companies that can come into that area can have a significant impact because that will be brand-new infrastructure that will go in. And as each one comes on, that's a benefit to the total system. So the growth can have a huge impact on spreading the costs out, as long as we get growth that is strong and beneficial to the urban sprawl. We've heard that from planners, it's a very expensive growth. But growth of companies, growth with some, the right amount of density can provide a great benefit to our water and wastewater budget. So those are some ideas that can help, that will help fix. I, I can't get in front of you and tell you that that rate's coming down yet, but there's a lot of things in play that can bring it down. And if you go deep into the data between And if you go deep into the data between what we pay and what other municipalities pay, and this is what the mayor was talking about, there is an opportunity, if we can bring our volume down on wastewater, that we can actually see, not this 10% every year. We can bring this down significantly. But we need a rate methodology, we need growth, and we need the capital infrastructure in the ground. And all of that doesn't happen today, and it probably doesn't happen immediately tomorrow. It's going to happen over time. But it, from staff's perspective, we appreciate the difficult decision that council has to make with respect to these increases to actually tackle this infrastructure problem.
Thank you. And, and it's not, not pointing at staff, but, you know, the works that we're doing. But I, I got a feeling with, with this rate, there's going to be a lot of phones ringing. My ears are ringing from my wife when I told her what the increase was going to be. And she wasn't happy. So I, I can't imagine when other people see, and maybe watching tonight and read in the paper in the coming days, on what the increase is going to be. And we get the full story by talking to staff and have these presentations. And not everybody sees that. And here's what we're working towards to bring the rate increases down and normalize them. And maybe through, you know, growth, we'll see reduction in them. So it's, it is a long process, but I think people have to sit back and understand that, yes, in years gone by, work wasn't done, that that's why we're here. You can sit and debate and argue it, but it's water under the bridge, or water not going through the pipes, or too much water in the pipes. But we're working towards the fix. And that's what I think people need to know, is we're really, really trying to get ahead of this so that for the future, the increases are less or zero, and that there will be some relief in the years to come. So, you know, provided that there's growth. So I just wanted to get that out. And it's, it's nice to, when you put it the way that you did, that there are some things that won't see a reduction, but there are things coming down, down the pipe that, that will. So there is light at the end, at the end of all of the pipes that we have in the ground, but we just got to get there. So I just wanted to get that out so people that are listening have a better understanding of what's going on. So thanks for that.
Further questions? Counsel Bruno?
Yeah, I like a lot of what Counselor Elliott said. It's all truth, but the phone is going to start to ring. And I don't know if there, you know, everybody will explain this differently, their own version as counselors. I don't know if there's, I'm not going to say a tone, how, but I don't know if there's, you know, we, we keep track of, of, of all our stats with customer service and that. And I, I don't know if sometimes when people call, you know, they're going to be upset, but we want them to get the true story. I think one of the things is, doesn't lower the bill, doesn't lower the pain. But I think bringing forward that better information piece on where your dollars are going on the tax bill, if we can carry that over, if January, February's too quick on that split of where money's going. Because I think if we are going to pursue the region on a, you know, peer review and get our numbers intact, I think it's helpful to have the citizens behind us and, and presenting that case. But, but I think it, you know, I don't know if, if we need a kit, if we're going to go out and do, I'm thinking of doing award meetings again. I know that can be a hit, but, you know, maybe it is we need, we need a Steve there on a, for one, or, or Brian, you there. Because I, I think, you know, it's very easy to get confused that it's just our spin, or we're just listening to staff and whatever they want. We give them, but, you know, this, yeah, it's, it's, it's going to be tough for a little while. And, but I, I think, I think the growth horizon, if that happens, I just look next door to us, how much they're fixing without going up when you're building 750 homes a year. Takes a huge, I mean, if we had 200 more homes in here, I should have to think what that would lower this rate by. And, you know, at the end of the day, that's not going to come overnight. So I think it's going to be part of all of us going out and educating it. But I'm, I'm glad Counsel Elliot asked you that question because it gave me a couple of talking points, too, that are, that are true. And, and so, yeah. I, I guess at the end of the day, you'd rather be known for the council that fixed things than one that pushed it down the road. But that's all my dissertation is. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you for that, sir. Further? Seeing none, we'll move on to the recommendation that's already been moved and seconded. That the Committee of the Hall recommend to council that Corporate Services Department report 2024-215 be received, and that the 2025 rate budget and debt substitution as outlined in report 2024-215 be approved. All for this? Posed, if any? Carry it. Sorry, I'll, okay, no problem. That the Committee of the Hall recommend to council that Corporate Services Department report 2024-216 be received, that the 2025 water and wastewater rates as outlined in Corporate Services Report 2024-216 be approved, that the 2025 storm sewer rates as outlined in Corporate Services Report 2024-216 be approved, and that the draft bylaw attached as Appendix A of Corporate Services Report 2024-216 be brought forward to council for consideration. All in favor? Posed, carried?